All right, it is 10:01 and I will reconvene the May 1st, 2023, meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners for introductions. I'm Jeff Benton, President of the Board this year. To my left is Vice President and Fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, to my right, Fellow Commissioner Bart Willis, and our Deputy Counsel, Chief Counsel and Deputy Administrator, they're close up at the table, Sarah DeNola and Jennifer Walraven are going to do the, run the meeting. So, okay, first item is to open the hearing?
Yes, but we are just noting the time of the reconvening of the final hearing for the Lynetta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
Okay, so we're good to go?
Yes.
All right. Well, let me review the process we'll go through today to, for this hearing. First of all, I want to welcome everyone to the continuation. This is a continuation of the hearing we had last year, of the final hearing for the consideration of Lynetta Lane subdivision drainage improvement project. There is a sign-in sheet circulating in the room. We ask you please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance today, and I'll review what we're going to do. We'll first hear a summary of the amendment number one to the final hearing report from the county engineer and the Soil and Water Conservation District. Following the summary presentation, there'll be time for questions from the board. After the board questions, the board will hear from any interested owners that wish to testify. Those speaking for or against the petition must be either an owner, as defined in Section 613101 of the Ohio Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of the owner. That's very important. We've had some folks who legally weren't allowed to speak try to testify before we had to decline their testimony. So, again, you have to be an owner or an attorney representing an owner. The board will acknowledge receipt of any landowner written testimony before hearing live testimony, and then will first call all those wishing to testify in favor of the project. We'll then call all those wishing to testify in opposition to the project. And before testifying, you'll be asked to take an oath. After all those wishing to testify for or against the project have been heard, there'll be an opportunity for responsive or rebuttal testimony. The board will close the public hearing after all testimony and evidence has been presented. And we really want to encourage not to be redundant in the testimony, because we've experienced that in the past and just makes the hearings longer. After listening testimony and reporting the engineer, the board will decide whether to find in favor of the improvement, affirm the previous order, confirm the assessments, and approve the payment schedule, or the board may dismiss the petition and set aside the previous order. In our consideration, the following factors will come into play in making our decision. Whether the proposed improvement is necessary, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvement will be less than the benefit the improvement provides. All right, with that, I will turn it over to Soil and, Brett Bacon from the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm just going to go over a, hit the high points of the addendum to the final report. Not going to read it word for word. We'll just kind of go through what has changed. As you'll recall, the board asked us to make some revision to the engineering plans to better reflect the nature of the clearing and snagging operation on Section 1 of the project, the proposed project. The plans have been revised to accomplish that. We have marked the trees that we would anticipate do not need to be taken down in the field, and we noted those on the plans. Furthermore, if the project is approved by the board and proceeds to construction, our plan would be to further, I'll say better mark those with snow fence or some other apparatus, so that we make every effort that those trees that don't need to come out to construct the project are protected. Additionally, we've revised the project work limits and access easements to show the existing drainage easements which would be utilized by the contractor as part of construction. Project cost has been revised to reflect the additional work that we have done to make these revisions to the plans. That amount was actually pretty minor. However, we have seen notable increases in the cost of some construction items based on our latest project bids and our unit price annual contract bid that we use for drainage maintenance. Those are the basis that we use to make our estimates for the project. And most notably, we've seen huge increases in the cost of seeding and mulching. We've also increased the cost for the clearing and snagging and the open channel construction on Section 1 to better reflect the extra effort that we're going to ask the contractor to go through to accomplish those bid items. So, the new estimates for Section 1, total estimated cost $48,992.22. Section 2, $59,862.80, and this amount would include $12,960 to be direct assessed to Genoa Township. Section 3N, $135,138.06, and that would include $52,440 to be direct assessed to Genoa Township. And Section 3S, $124,794.24, and that would include $52,926 to be assessed to Genoa Township. Recommendations, our recommendations remain the same as we presented at the first final hearing, convening of the first final hearing back in August. In our opinion, this project is technically feasible and would adequately serve the watershed's drainage needs. However, the board should weigh heavily the testimony of the landowners they received today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just an observation. A lot of times when we do these kind of projects, you mark the trees you want to take out. In this case, you mark the trees you want to keep.
That's correct.
I trust the contractor will understand that distinction.
We will make sure they understand that distinction.
What an important distinction.
This is, this is what pre-construction meetings are for.
Yeah, yeah. Did you learn anything from doing this additional work, you know, in terms of changing the scope or changing the complexity of the project during?
Uh, no, the project, this would, what we've reflected on the plans is how we conduct all of our projects. We've just kind of reduced that to writing in this case.
Okay.
It doesn't change what, what our intention of construction was at any point.
Okay. The, the Section 1 is the first of the four sections that, that need to be done and have to be done if any of the others are going to be approved.
Correct.
I think that's important to state.
Yeah, yeah. The decision matrix is, is the same as we presented at the, back in August. Section 1 needs to be done for anything to occur. Section 2 would need to be done for either of the Section 3s to be done. And then, your options, if you approve Section 1 and Section 2, Section 3N and 3S can either both be approved, both be denied, or one approved and one denied.
Okay. Were there any costs to Genoa Township in Section 1?
Uh, not, they, they have an assessment as a landowner holding right-of-way in the watershed, but no direct assessment. There's no work in Section 1 that would directly benefit right-of-way.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So, thank you, Brett. We will now move to the testimony. Wait, we got to acknowledge a letter that was received.
Correct. We did receive a letter on the 27th of April from landowners in Section 3N of the Lynetta project that are not in favor of Section 3N being approved. And I can read those names if I need to. Okay. So, but the board has a copy of that letter.
Yes, we did receive that. I think there were 10 signatures, 10 different residents. So, yes, we did receive that. So, that's our, we need to acknowledge that, and with that, we've not acknowledged it.
Yep, it's been acknowledged.
Okay, all right. Uh, let's see. Next would be the, any of those who wish to testify in favor of the project. Now Brett, they could testify in favor of one section or two sections and not in favor of the other two, or one or two or three. How does that?
Yes, that would be my opinion. The way we've structured the project as far as the approval process, a landowner or a group of landowners could be in favor of, you know, for, for instance, the letter that you received, they could be in favor of doing Sections 1 and 2 and not 3N. And again, that's, we've structured the project to give the board the option of, piecemealings maybe not the best word, but, but structuring your decision to reflect that testimony.
Okay. So, Eric, if someone wanted to testify in favor of 1 and 2 and then opposed to 3 and 4, for instance, they could testify now in favor and then in the next phase testify in opposition?
Sure, however the board wants to handle that.
Okay, okay. I think that's the way we'll go then. So, first thing would be, again, it doesn't have to be in favor of any one in particular, but I wanted to open it up to those landowners who wanted to testify in favor of any or all of the sections. Come on up, and we'll ask you to take an oath, and if you could identify the property, then that would be very much appreciated. So, you could state your name and address, please?
Craig Xander, 7641 Lynetta.
Okay.
Which is part of 3N.
Okay.
So...
Whoa, let me, let me swear you in first. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Do you happen to know your lot number?
Yeah.
Number 3.
Number what?
3.
3, okay. Very good.
Okay. We built the home on Lynetta in 2002, so we've been there 21 years. And for all of that time, except for the last five years or so, the drainage was not a problem. It worked fine. And I think what has been, you know, we, the street filed the petition or to ask Delaware County to investigate what was going on. You did that, and by your own description of the work, it appears that Section 1 and 2 have not been maintained through the years. And they've overgrown and they've become clogged, thus allowing, or not allowing, Section 3 to drain properly. And I would like to, not understanding why, honestly, that people of Lynetta Lane need to be assessed a piece of Section 1 and 2 since it was out of our control to maintain that property. But we are in, or I am in favor of approving 1 and 2 and not approving 3N. And there's 11 homeowners on 3N. 10 of them signed the letter that I brought to the courthouse last week. The other homeowner is a very new resident and I think just kind of trying to grab some information. So, by and large, the residents of 3N are in agreement with, with what I just stated, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we will continue with those who wish to speak in favor. Right on up. Okay, if you could identify, if you could, just again, we're recording everything. If you could state your name and address and then lot number if you, if you know it.
Yep. My name's Lisa Kletcharowski. I'm at 7816 Lynetta Lane, and I think that's 36?
Yes.
36?
36.
36.
I want to share some information that is new to you that you wouldn't know since we were last together, and it's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should stop.
Yep. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great, you can proceed.
Um, yeah, I'd like to share some information that's new since the last time we were together, and it's specifically talking about Section 2. Section 2 runs right along my property and, and then the neighbor on the other side. And, you know, we were last together nine months ago, and at the last hearing, there was the decision to sort of delay, delay the final decision, whatever that was going to be, so that soil and water could do that additional work, and then the, the Harvest Wind homeowners could have the opportunity to remedy Section 1 on their own, I think were the two things. There was some concern, there was some concern from all of us who are at the end of this drainage issue on Lynetta, that how are we going to make it through another winter and spring with, if nothing's done? And so, a handful of us back in November decided to rent some equipment, and we, we took and brush-hogged all of Section 2 and backhoed very lightly Section 2, the portion up front. And it was all severely overgrown, as I'm sure you remember from the pictures. So, we took and we did as much as we could and, that day, and, you know, probably had a little bit of a positive impact to get us to this point without a lot of further damage. But it, what we did certainly didn't fix the, the issue permanently or properly, I would say. If you look at, the funny thing is, I, and I have pictures if anybody would ever care to see them, but if you look at that, that ditch and all that work that we did back in November, it's probably 60% overgrown, like back to the state that it was. So, my guess would be by the end of the summer, it's going to look like we were never there. So, that being said, you know, we did try to do something positive without, without the support of Delaware to do the proper fix. And, and really, you know, I, what we did that day is not reasonable or sustainable for one homeowner or a group of homeowners to, to do on an ongoing basis as much as it would need to be done. One of the things you talk about is, is this necessary? Is, that was one of the questions that you have to answer, is the work necessary? And I guess, the one thing that, I'm not sure, maybe it was in one of the earlier reports, but I think it's specifically on Section 1. Section 1, I think, is a, and actually, that's a drainage easement around that area. And so, at some point, dating back to, I think it was the 1800s and several times since then, it had been approved, that particular area had been approved, that was necessary work to be done to allow the proper flow of water. So, you know, and it wasn't one time, it was, I think, multiple times over the years. So, I think that's probably points to the fact that Section 1 is certainly necessary, because it had been determined in the past. You know, again, I guess what I would just like to say is that, you know, we did what we could to try to address it in, in any form. And we were trying to be really mindful too of not overdoing it, because we didn't want to burden others or, you know, create an issue for anyone downstream of us. So, we did, we did what we felt was sort of minimal to get water moving down that, down Section 2. And, and again, the, the impact that we had was sort of minimal at best. So, I, I think what I, what I'm here to say is that we need the county to help to properly solve this drainage issue for us. The solution that you have puts Lynetta Lane at the end of the line. So, you know, I guess, you know, we, we have to have Section 1 and 2 to even allow any water to flow through there from our street. But we need your help in solving the drainage problem on Lynetta and within the entire watershed. So, I'm just asking you to please vote for this.
I have a couple of questions. Question 1, what was your cost to, to try to do the cleanup work? You and your neighbors, what did y'all spend?
Uh, I think it was, uh, I think it was about $500.
And second question, I, just for clarity, are you supporting all four areas?
You know, I, that's a, that's a tough question. And here's why I say that. I think for sure, 1 and 2, there's, there's a lot of mini dams along the way, and all of those exist within 1 and 2. I mean, you saw the pictures, and I can walk my property and see the ones in Section 2 where there are a lot of mini dams along the way. So, those two seem very obvious to me. You know, I think, I think when we engaged this process, we had, we had most all of the neighbors in support of trying to investigate and come up with what, what the experts feel is the proper solution. And, and that's where soil or soil and water experts come in. So, what they designed was what they feel is the solution for all of the problem. And, and I'm not an expert, so I don't, I don't really know. I mean, I, I, I don't, if you do 1 and 2, is that going to resolve it by 75%, 80%, 90%? I have, I have no idea. All I know is that they're the experts, and I think that's where your decision comes into play.
Now, they're recommending all four areas, so you, you support their recommendation?
I support, I, I, I support the expertise of them, and I also support whatever decision you come to. But I know that we just need something to help resolve the, the water issue. And status quo is, you know, it, it's continued to get worse since I've lived there for 12 years, and it will continue to get worse. And it isn't sustainable for people like me or us to do that on our own.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing with those in favor of the project. State your name and address and lot number if you know it.
Michael Kavalcik, 7581 Lynetta Lane.
Yep.
And lot number, I'm not sure.
I believe he's 34.
34, okay.
Okay.
I need to swear you in. Uh, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, you can proceed.
I too was a part in, in that, in the fall, and helped out, clean out a temporary fix through the process of the winter time. We rented a backhoe and went through that, that process and just created a small ditch to allow some flow. I've lived there for 20 years, and when I initially built my house, and I'm speaking just for myself, when I built my house, Delaware County, I had to pull a permit. Genoa Township then came in. They would not let me place a culvert pipe under the ground. They had to place it. I paid for that and put the pipe in. They, Genoa Township placed the pipe, and everything was flowing properly for literally 20 years. Over the past five years, we've seen a decrease in flow. I believe, after looking at this and speaking to Brett and speaking to all these diff, through this whole process, that Sections 1 and 2, 100% are needed, because the maintenance has not been done on 1 and Sections 1 and 2, and it created a slowdown effect on Section 3 and 4, thus causing the whole problem. I feel, Section 1 and 2, I'm 100% for that. Okay? I don't feel that we should be assessed for that. I feel that the taxes should pay for that, though if it has to be done, it has to be done. I'm willing to accept that. Section 3 and 4, I feel that we should look at that and see if after 1 and 2 is done, we could reassess it and possibly do 3 and 4 down the road. That's why I signed that statement that I'm for, and only speaking for the north side of the road, that I'm for not, or just proposing 1 and 2 to get done and 3 and 4 to not get done at this time, because there is such an added expense for everybody. And I know personally that if 1 and 2 is working correctly, 3 and 4 are flowing. And again, Genoa Township placed that culvert pipe in my yard and 90% of the other yards that have culvert pipes that are underneath the ground. Those were placed by Genoa Township and permitted and placed to actually work properly. Now, the other ones that were not placed were the open culvert ditches. Now, those have been overgrown. So, the only thing that I would say in the proposal, that those people that are on the street that do have open culverts, ditches, that those need to be cleaned out to allow Section 1 and 2 to still flow for our street if Section 3 and 4 are not done. Does that make sense? So...
I have a question. May I?
Sure.
If we were to do what you're suggesting, it means you have to start all over on this process again for those two areas, and you're, you're talking another three, four, five years probably. Time this is constructed, time you get an idea whether meets your criteria. Are you good with that?
I'm, I am okay with that, because I've lived there for 20 years, and I've seen at work, the system works. It's 1 and 2 that's causing the, the backup. 1 and 2 has not been maintained.
We're making that assumption, but...
I'm making that assumption, yes. Am I willing to pay for it? Yes, I am. If, if you guys do approve it, yeah, I, I guess I have to. But personally living there and seeing it, I know that that water had flown, has flowed through there properly for the last 20 years. And it's steadily just decreased, because Section 1 and 2 were not maintained.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, we'll continue. Others who wish to testify in favor of the project. Come on up. All right, if you could ident, if you could ident, state your name and address and, and tell me what lot number you are, if you know it.
My name's Will Scherz. I live at 7680 Lynetta Lane, and I believe it's lot 41.
41?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me swear you in. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, you can proceed.
I've lived in our home for over 30 years. And when we moved there, it was nothing but farmland and open fields and stuff like that. Over the period of the years, development came. Lynetta Lane was the only street between Max Town and Big Walnut. Now, there are many, many streets going there. At that time, I never had any problems with flooding in my basement or anything of that sort. When they started building, when they put that retention pond at the end, or the entrance of Lynetta Lane, we started having some issues. Also, at the end of our street, there was some wetlands, and things used to flow towards the wetland, and didn't have any problems whatsoever. In the process, the wetlands were drained. A house was built there, and that's when I started having problems. I've had my basement flooded numerous times, and previous meetings, I've showed them the money and how many times it's been flooded. And I don't know, for some reason or another, you know, we have these problems now, you know, with flooding and backflow and stuff like that. And I don't know who's really to blame for this, but for some reason or another, I don't know why, you know, we should be penalized, you know, to fix this problem when we got the okay, you know, from the commissioners and, I mean, not the commissioners, the engineers and stuff like that to allow this to happen. But somehow or another, now things are kind of backing up and everything.
Sir, are you in favor then of, of doing what?
Well, I'm in favor of the least spent money, which probably is 1 and 2. So, and again, it was mentioned before, if 1 and 2 works, I don't see why we should do 3 and 4.
And not do 2 and 4, is that what you said?
No, do 1 and 2.
Do 1 and 2, but then not 3, 3 and...
North and south.
North, 3, north and south, right. Okay.
I just want to make a comment. Understand, none of us in this room are responsible for the drainage issues. The state has set a process to try to correct those issues, and that's why we're here today. So, what occurred 15, 20 years ago is really, no one in this room had anything to do with that. And again, the state has just created a procedure to try to correct these issues around the county and all the counties in the state where they exist. So, that's why we're here today.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Okay.
Good, very good. Thank you. All right, more in favor? Can you state your name, your ad, address, and lot number if you know it?
Andrew Ganser, 7683 Lynetta, lot number 122.
Okay. Let me swear you in. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, proceed.
I, we built our house in 2004 through 2005. Again, we had the drainage tile installed and inspected by the government authorities at our cost. We had our driveway installed at our c... We had our driveway installed at our cost. I know this is a process, but to have to pay for that twice doesn't seem reasonable to me. I don't know who you blame, but I'm in favor of 1 and 2 only. And I'm not happy with having to pay the fee, but we will pay it. I have a question about the ongoing maintenance. Is that, is this a proper time for that, or...
Yeah, the ongoing maintenance is a part of the project, so if you have a question, I'm sure the experts would be glad to...
So, we have an ongoing maintenance fee, I guess, it's going to be assessed on our taxes. What does that, if 1 and 2 only are going to be done, what does that maintenance look like?
Brett, or, you know the numbers very well?
Yeah, so, maintenance would only cover the portions of the project that would be approved. So, if Sections 1 and 2 are approved and 3N and 3S are not, we would maintain what's constructed as part of 1 and 2. And the maintenance assessments then would be based on the constructed cost of those two sections. And all the landowners received in their letters and in the schedule of assessments, it's broken down by what each property's assessment would be, or proposed assessment would be for the individual sections. But yes, there would be an ongoing maintenance, special assessment for maintenance of the project. And we typically average somewhere between 3 and 5% annually of the construction cost.
I do have a question.
Yeah, and just, the first year's maintenance pay-in is included in...
That's part of the project estimate, yes.
Part of the private cost, yes.
If you don't do all four sections, again, I'm not the expert, you are, I can see the maintenance changing as far as the cost of maintenance because not all the projects are being done, not all the areas are being done. Is that a fair statement or unfair statement, unrealistic statement? So, could the maintenance be higher if you're not doing all of them?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Because we're going to maintain what's constructed and our, our task is to maintain that to the engineering that's been presented. So, our, our goal is to keep it operating as it was designed and constructed to operate. I don't know that that, for Sections 1 and 2, that doesn't become more difficult for lack of doing 3N and 3S.
But you're going to charge whatever it takes to make, make whole?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Yep. More in favor?
So, as I was going to...
Just state your name and address again.
Okay, Michael.
We've already sworn you in, so...
Okay, Michael Kavalcik, 7581 Laneta Lane, in Leesterville. So, Brett, so, if Sections 1 and 2 are approved and Sections 3 and 4 are not, as we, as I'm proposing, are the open culverts still going to be maintained by Genoa Township? The open culverts in people's yards that don't have drainage pipes in their yard?
Hey, did you know a question?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Brett, you qualified to answer that?
Yeah, again, Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Delaware Swim Water. If 3N and 3S are not approved, Genoa Township would still have the, the right and the responsibility to maintain whatever in the right-of-way. But, but anything outside of the right-of-way, it would be left to the private property owners to maintain. Because Township, and this goes for the county, state, doesn't matter, governmental authorities, we can only maintain what's in the right-of-way unless something's done through the 6131 process. That's the only mechanism that gives us the authority to extend beyond the right-of-way. So, I, I can't answer to what Genoa Township would do.
Very good.
Genoa Township, is he?
Yeah, yeah.
Paul Vines is here, I don't know.
I don't know that.
Yeah.
That'd be a little bit...
Okay.
So, anyway, understanding, good questions. Another gentleman wants to speak in favor. Name, address, and lot number?
William Jeffrey Bendit. I'm at 7755 Laneta Lane, and I think it's Lot Number 4.
Number 4. All right, let me swear you in, if you would please.
Do you solemn, that's where you're in. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Yes. Proceed.
Yeah, I agree with what these other gentlemen have said in so far that, you know, we paid for it once, and to get assessed again, I don't think it's fair. The tax rate there is pretty significant. When we built houses there, I was one of the, first, ours was built in 2001, and we did everything the right way and got everything approved. And so, I, it's, I'm willing to help pay, but it's, it doesn't seem right. Other than that, what I, since that last summer, when we helped to trench some ditches there, I can tell you that my, well, the barometer that I would like to use is that when we first built there, there was never any problems. Sump pump ran regularly when it rained. About five years ago, I'd say, it started, I started noticing the sump pumps running all the time. And my ba, my sump, I had two, I think I burned up two or three sump pumps and I had to clean up my basement. And it, and I didn't really think of it as a drainage issue. I was like, gosh, I wonder, you know, but the sump, I'd noticed the sump pump was running, 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 more and more and more, even when it didn't rain for a couple of weeks. Then my neighbor, there, something happened there and their stuff backed up. They, they put new drains in, and, but my sump pump was still running. But ever since we did those, those drainage ditches, at least in my house, my sump pump runs like it used to now. It runs when it, when it rains, it runs, you know, three or four days after it rains, but once it's dried up, it, it's, it's not continuously running anymore.
You're talking about the work that was done this winter, after the work that was done this winter?
What we did in November, there was a backhoe, we did a trench there and then the second trench dug with a shovel by hand because the backhoe was sinking in the mud and stuff. But it's real wet back there, and you can see all the stuff that had grown up over the years, and that's, and since, ever since we've done that, my sump pump is not continuously running anymore. And so, that, that's a barometer, to me, that shows that, you know, if we do 1 and 2, I bet that there's not going to be any need for doing 3 and 4.
So, you favor 1 and 2?
I favor 1 and 2. I don't agree with, that it's, it's fair that we get assessed with paying for it. Because, I mean, if you're going to assess, you know, us paying for it, what about, I mean, it was never a problem, as Will was saying, before all these other housing came in, which, then there's, there's pavement, which means there's more water flow, there was no problem there. So, why wouldn't you assess all the houses that came in after Laneta Lane? Or, you know, because as far as we'd be concerned, that's the problem. All that new water that came from all those, those new subdivisions has caused more water flow. And it, so why wouldn't they be assessed? We split the cost unilaterally, all, you know, throughout all the, the whole neighborhood. Why is it just assessed on, on our street? You know, there's a handful of streets. But that, that's my personal question.
Well, all the, all the residents in the watershed would be assessed.
The Hillmar section too. Because all those, all those houses that came in, when I moved there, there was no houses in the Hillmar, and there was none in the...
What's the subdivision just to the south of Eagle Trace?
None of those homes at Eagle Trace, none of the houses in Hillmar were there.
The experts would tell you that, I think, correct me wrong, that those houses that affect this watershed are being affected. If they're not, they're not. And that, is that correct, Brett?
Yeah, I, the, the engineering for those subdivisions, that water does not drain through Laneta Lane. I know there's the perception in, in the neighborhood that it does, but it, it just simply does not. So, those properties do not have benefit nor use of the system as designed.
And I'm not, I'm not claiming to be an expert. I'm, I'm the, you know, 10,000-foot view looking down, oh, these houses weren't, right? So, sorry if I stepped on...
If they were affected, they would have been included.
Okay. Well, I didn't know that. I'm just, you know, I'm a layman and I'm not, that's not my business, so...
Yeah.
Now, my point was that all the homes in the watershed are participating in the cost of, again, proposed Section 1. Section 2 would be just the ones within Section 2.
Okay. Well, and again, so my main point is, is that 1 and 2, it's, to me, it's only rational and logical, it makes sense that you do 1 and 2 and see what happens rather than do all of that work. Especially that we've got, and at least in my case, there's a barometer of how much my sump pump's been running. And, and we just did a little bit of leases property, and, and it's like, wow, big difference. At least, that's been my experience. Now, I've seen it grow back real quick as we, you know, we did a minimal amount, but if it was done properly, yeah, it probably solved the issue. That's my opinion.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. More in favor? Anybody else? Yes, come on up. Now, we've, if you could repeat your name and address, but we've already sworn you in, so let's where you in.
Will Chavez, 7680 Laneta Lane. I'd like to dispute...
What's his address? I mean, I'm sorry, it's one, it's not... Your lot number, sir?
Forty-one.
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 He's already spoken.
Yeah, he's spoken.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. There was a time, there was a bad storm, lightning, water coming down, cats and dogs, you know, all this kind of stuff. And one of the neighbors who has since moved away, his name is Frank Shrek, we went out there and we walked Laneta Lane. And we came to the south side of Tussick, and we saw water just spilling over from that retaining pond that was there. So, our lane is affected by some of the building over there. So...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Anyone else in favor want to speak? Again, you don't have to speak. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor of any of the proposed sections? All right, we will now go to those who want to speak in opposition to the project or any of the sections. Anybody want to speak? You know, we've covered a lot of those folks who are opposed to some of the sections. Yes, come on up, please.
Commissioner Sean Curran, 6244 Spring Run Drive.
Speak up, please.
Sean Curran, 6244 Spring Run Drive.
And lot number?
Lot number 117, I believe.
117?
117.
All right. I'll swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
Yes.
Okay, proceed.
So, and what Brett has done with his plans and the revisions we've done since the last hearing, I think the residents along our street are pleased with. There's still this unease that there could be damage done to the woods that affect the sightlines that we see throughout our backyards. But the snow fence, I think, that you said you put up to try to retain the activity as much as possible, I think that is a very positive step, so that was our main concern. But what I think we need to consider here with the whole plan of the project is, it doesn't seem to, something doesn't make sense here, because if we say that Section 1 is really the cause of this problem, that means, based on the testimony, something happened within the last five years that caused this backup. Now, if that's the case, if Section 1 is really that problem, then no activity along Laneta Lane should provide any relief, I wouldn't think, because Section 1 is just plugged and no one's doing anything in Section 1. So, I don't know if it necessarily makes sense. And if you remember, the first proposal of this project had no Section 1 in it. It was just that first section along Laneta Lane, which included Section 2 into the retention ponds, and that was it. Now, we can say, okay, well, further analysis is done, maybe Section 1 doesn't look as clean as it should be. And I'll admit, yeah, it's, it isn't clean, but it's also not plugged. We've had animal activity in a couple points along that area. One was just south of where the major retention pond behind my house exits. And upon clearing of that animal activity, the pond behind our house is dramatically lower. So, it seems like it's come to a point of regulation. There is another piece of activity up near the pond on, I believe it's Rookery Way, where I think reports earlier were saying, well, the exit pipe coming from the retention ponds around the golf course is, is almost submerged or occasionally submerged. There's a beaver dam or something like 15 feet away from that. And I think if that was cleared out, you might see a heck of a lot more flow that could avoid a lot of the, you know, the, the activity in Section 1. Now, that said, you could argue, well, the county's going to maintain that, we still need to do the clearing and snag and get it up to speed. But I think you could do it a lot cheaper by taking action on the animal activity and see what happens. Then you could also say, well, why don't we just start with Section 2 and see what happens there, right? If you see relief in Section 2, or if you see, if you do Section 2 and see no relief, I think then you can say, well, we can guarantee now that Section 1 is the problem. Because once you go to Section 1, you got to look further south too, because there's another petition I know called the, what is it, the Miller Williams, Miller Williams Homes petition, that's just south of here, that they brought forward because of the activity on this project that's going on. So, that would also have to be done by the same logic we're using for Section 1. And then who knows, beyond that, there might be even more. So, I think taking a harder look at it, and it sounds like the residents on Laneta don't want to see the expense of the drainage along their home lines, in front of their home lines, well, why don't we just try Section 2 first and see what happens? Because I don't think any report of flooding or problems in Section 1 was done over the last five years or prior to five years ago, when supposedly all the, the water was flowing out of Laneta Lane. Now, also, it sort of conflicts what we saw in the earlier reports on this project, that Laneta Lane had no drainage. No drainage planned, nothing was put in, homes were built there, didn't have any drainage. So, again, it still, still seems like something's not making sense. And I'm not trying to say absolutely don't do the project, but it, it sounds like there's a lot of conflict of what's being reported. So, I would say that you can't do, one, you can't do Section 1 without doing any of the rest. Section 2 probably makes the most logical sense to do first and then see where we stand there. Because it sounds like Section 2 is really the problem, if, in fact, drainage, which was okay up until five years ago. So, and I don't know, Brett, if you want to...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. And more on, more in opposition to, again, any of the sections? Come on up.
I just have a general question.
Sure.
I'm Jeff, William Jeffrey Bendit, 7755 Laneta Lane.
You've already been sworn in, so why don't you do that again?
I just want to make a clarification. All of us stood up when it was for it, and now there's the against it. I just want to make sure that we're on the right record, that we're against 3 and 4, 3N and 3S, but we're okay with 1 and 2. Is that...
Sure. We understand that, right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Several of you made that very clear.
Yeah.
Opposition? Anybody else want to speak in opposition to any or all of those sections? All right.
Could Ray come back in?
Oh, yeah, sure. Brett?
Brett, I got to ask you this question, it's kind of a question I typically ask, but a little, little different framework today. We spent a lot of time on this project. Originally, I think it was Laneta areas, and it kind of got expanded to include the other areas. Your recommendation is we should do all four areas? Is that still where you stand?
All four areas are technically feasible and is reflective of the request that was made for us to examine. I think you, you've heard testimony that... You want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't want to. We always say that you should weigh heavily the, the testimony of the landowners. With regards to, let's, the hypothetical of, should you approve 1 and 2 and not Sections 3? It, it's certainly a request the landowners can make if they would decide, they, they would have to file a new petition to address those or to, I'll say, re-speak those improvements. The advantage, if, if that were the case, I don't think it would take the same amount of time, because the engineering is already done. You know, we've had cases like this in the past where a petition that was denied is refiled. We, we pretty much, you know, we, we do sound engineering on the front end, the, the landowners have paid for those plans, their good engineering plans are obviously engineering... Their good engineering plans are obviously engineering plans that the Engineers Office has approved. They are certainly usable in the future. So, you know, I, I think.
Well, you're avoiding the question a little bit. So, are you recommending only do Section One and Two at this point? From your expertise, what are you recommending? Are the other two necessary now as you understand it? Or just those Section One and Two?
I, I think Rob should speak first. Let Rob speak.
All right. Good morning. Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer with the Engineers Office. I want to speak, I guess, a little bit to about expectations. You know, the, at the root of this project is a drainage issue. You've heard testimony both for and against the project, dealing with all parts, the downstream portion and the upstream portion. It's important to keep in mind, when Laneta Lane was originally constructed years ago, it was an open ditched street. It had roadside ditches like most, I'd say rural or suburban streets built at that time. It was not curb and gutter. It does not have enclosed drainage. It actually has, say, a foot and a half to two and a half foot roadside ditches. We find it very common that when residents move in, build a home on that type of a street, they want their front yard to be flat, easily mowable. And so, oftentimes, they will, residents will request that their ditch be enclosed. A pipe will be put in and then that grade leveled out so it's easy to mow. It stays dry on top because whatever, what inevitably happens with that open ditch, after it rains, it stays wet for a period of time. That, that swale or that ditch is difficult to mow through the spring and through the late fall. So, an enclosure basically does away, it, it addresses that problem. I suspect that was the case with most of the, the homes along Laneta Lane. I think there are still a few that, that do have that open ditch remaining. I want to be very clear, the Section Three N and Three S would restore the street to that open ditch condition. And so, I spoke about expectations. That needs to be considered in the expectation for this project. From a drainage standpoint, we feel that is the, the most economical and the best result to have that open ditch restored to its original condition. But with that said, it's very important to note, some folks may not be happy with that. They, they wanted their ditch filled in and Genoa Township enclosed many of those ditches for a reason. It's because folks want a flat front yard that's easily mowed. Commissioner, you asked about the, our recommendation. Our recommendation is that three, all of these sections have a positive benefit cost ratio. They would all result in benefit to the property. However, something very important to consider is the expectation. What does my front yard look like after the project is done? Again, this takes it back to the original condition that, at some point, whoever lived there at the time wanted their ditch enclosed. And so, that's important to point out for, for what it's worth. It's very difficult to put a, difficult or impossible to put a dollar figure on expectation. That's something your, your board has to weigh in the decision-making. We certainly think there's merit to Section One and Two. I don't think there's any, you know, expectation doesn't necessarily weigh into that to the same level because those are open ditched sections that would be essentially restored to their former open ditch condition. What we're talking about in Three N and Three S is basically taking a partially enclosed system, restoring it back to open ditch. So, again, I wanted to point that out to make that, make sure that was very clear. Thank you.
So, so you're saying then, if, if we don't do Three N and S, then there will be open dishes, open ditches then along?
There wouldn't be.
No. There wouldn't be no changes.
If, if we do nothing with, if you don't approve Three N and Three S, they will be left alone.
Okay.
And if you were to approve one and two, it'd strictly be the downstream sections that would be opened up. And I know one property owner just testified as to the condition in Section One. We, we, I think that it's a fair statement to, to make that there are some plugs and some obstructions in that channel. Some of that is very likely due to beavers doing what they do, building up dams and obstruction in the waterway. What I can tell you is the reason we define a section is not just going in and cleaning out individual log jams is because in five years, we may very well be back to it in the same situation if we don't place the entire section on maintenance. So, that's the, at the root of, we're, we're charged with basically defining and, and coming up with a good and sufficient outlet. We've done that. Section One goes to a point that we think is good and sufficient. Our proposal is to maintain all of Section One to ensure that no future blockages result in that area once, once it would be constructed and we continue to maintain it, so.
So, if, if Section Two is approved, but then Three North and South is not approved, are the people in Section Two, their drainage, I take it, will be okay, will be, will be, well, will be improved greatly?
Yes. Commissioner, Section Two flows into Section One. It doesn't go into Section Three.
Okay.
And so, it's, it's basically three, two, one, from top to bottom.
Okay.
So, anything downstream will, will have some level of positive effect on any property upstream.
So, it's your belief, if I can summarize, that Section One and Two theoretically could solve the problem for everyone?
I want to be very clear. It, it will not completely solve the front yard drainage issues along Section Three. However.
But if those neighbors are okay with that, then it's theoretically possible.
And I think that's some of the testimony you've heard today is that folks have testified, they, they've already paid for those enclosures once. They, I, I hope I, I made it very clear, those enclosures will be removed if, if you proceed with Section Three N and Three S. And so, hearing that, I don't know if there'd be any further testimony, but, yeah.
I have a question for Eric.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
If, and I think it's a question we have to answer before we go into any votes. If we don't do the Laneta South and Laneta North, administrative costs were factored into that, and that was allocated over all the properties, we have to recalculate the administrative costs, and they have to pay that part of it to be fair to the people in Section One and Section Two. Otherwise, it theoretically falls on them.
So, in concept, that's correct. Whether that was actually done, I'll have to.
Well, it was done on the assumption that all four areas were going to be done. Those administrative costs now going to be, somebody's got to pay for them, either the county's paying for them or the other residents with direct, they have to be recalculated and pay for them.
Yes. The administrative costs, I can give you those exactly. For Section Three N, the administration, administration survey and engineering is four thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. And for Three S, three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Like any part of the project, or, you know, if the project were denied, this, this is not specific to the Laneta Lane project, but just in general, if a petition project is denied, it is our recommendation and the county engineer's recommendation that the cost for survey and, and administration be assessed to the landowners in the same rate or the same ratio a, as the final schedule of assessments. In this case, for the Laneta Lane properties, it would be an equal distribution. So, the four thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars, forty-four cents, we would recommend that in addition to the construction assessment, should you approve one and two, you would also have a second assessment to recollect that amount of money, and that would be divided equally amongst the properties that would be shown on the scheduled assessments as being assessed for Three N, and then the same thing for Three S.
And those, those assessments are only for Sections Three because?
Correct.
Sections Two and One don't benefit from those improvements.
Right.
And so, the assessment would just be going, I think that's your question. That's why I said in concept, it's right, but I didn't know the, the details of it. But if you're concerned about that cost being spread across the entire watershed, it would not.
But should the people in Laneta South and North still pay the administrative cost if we, if we for some reason did not go forward with including them in this?
As Brett mentioned, that has been the recommendation because the only other statutory alternative is that the county pays for that.
So, do we need a resolution as we go through this?
It's already provided.
It's already in.
That's already provided.
Same there? Okay. Okay, very good.
So, basically, to summarize, the costs incurred to date, if we were to decline any of them, would be still allocated to the same way that the full cost allocation would be.
Yes, that's correct. And we have had at least one project where we had a, a lateral denied, and we did assess the cost of engineering to the, the properties benefited by the lateral. I think it was the, the Dutcher Scott Project in two thousand and eleven.
Those, that, that will come back to you as a resolution in the future, should the board dismiss any part of the project, and it would be certified over to the auditor's office.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Okay. Any rebuttal or other testimony at this point? Eric, you got some?
I mean, there is one legal issue that I, that has not been addressed. It usually is addressed by somebody else, but since it has not been, I will go ahead and do that. Some of the testimony has mentioned, well, two things. There was one proponent of doing only Section Two. As Brett has explained, that is not a possible option because Section One is necessary for Section Two to have a good and sufficient outlet. So, that is not one of your options. I just wanted to clarify that, to only do Section Two. You could only do Section One and so on. The other issue that really is a legal issue is several of the folks who have testified have said that they are okay with proceeding with Sections One and Two, but they don't think that they should be assessed for it. The law actually says that they are benefited. Their water on their property in Section Three makes its way through this entire project, and so they are receiving the benefit of the improvements to Section One and Two, and that's why the law says that they are benefited and to be assessed.
Yeah, good point. Good points.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Last chance. All right.
No, the last, the clerk two.
We would, we would like to make a note that the public part of the hearing ended at eleven oh three.
Yeah, the, the hearing is officially closed at eleven oh three. Okay. Now, we get into resolutions on each of the sections.
Would there be any conversation maybe before we do that, or do we?
Sure.
You know, this has been, I'm going to, this has been very frustrating for each of you and for these commissioners as we try to do the right thing. This was originally put in play by residents in Laneta on that street and, and expanded includes Section One and Section Two as more research was done. Our goal is simply to get a good result for everyone. And sometimes that's not real clear. Some of the, some of the comments I heard today, well, let's do the Section One and Two, and then we'll see how it turns out. And I, I understand that. As a resident, I probably take that approach as well. And as we evaluate the practicality of that, and I think we'll all make that clear through our votes, but I also want to say, Section One and Section Two, you have been very reasonable in how you've approached this. We went into recess last year because of concern about the trees in, in the creek, and only heard one person comment on that. And even that person, I think, felt fairly comfortable with the approach. I don't want to put words in their mouth. But our goal is to get the water flowing in a way that does not affect anyone. And I just want to applaud the residents in Section One and Two and in Laneta North and South for your patience with this process and our efforts to try to do the right thing to benefit everyone. So, as we vote here in a minute, I just wanted to say thank you for the, your patience with the process. So, that's my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments?
No, I'd just like to move along to the resolutions that we will approve.
Yeah, I didn't have any other comments. Again, thanks, everyone, for participating. Everyone was very much engaged and well thought out, well presented, thoughts and recommendations. So.
Okay. Is the best way for me to just say what resolutions?
First, let's consider that we are considering Section One.
Okay.
If you would like me to read the resolution in favor of the Section One, or would you like me to read setting aside the order?
I would like you to read in favor of Section One, please.
Resolution number two-three dash three-five-six, in the matter of finding in favor of the improvement and affirming the order for Section One, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Any further discussion? All right. Vote, please, Jennifer.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-five-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-five-seven, in the matter of commissioners confirming the assessments, approving the payment schedule, and ordering the letting of contracts for Section One, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote, please.
One, one item I do want to point out is that there was a change in the payment term to fifteen years. It's normally eight, and so I don't want that to go unsaid. That, that was a change. Just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Nick, why was that, Eric?
I think it was per request.
I think the change is a state law that made it possible.
Well, it was always possible before.
It's always been possible.
Yeah.
I think the township had a request for that.
All right. So, vote on motion two-three dash three-five-seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Okay. That is Section One, so now we go to Section Two.
Yes. Section Two, consideration. How, direction?
I would like you to read in favor of Section Two, please.
Resolution number two-three dash three-five-eight, in the matter of finding in favor of the improvement and affirming the order for Section Two, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's vote, Jennifer.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-five-eight. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Okay.
Resolution number two-three dash three-five-nine, in the matter of commissioners confirming the assessments, approving the payment schedule, and ordering the letting of contracts for Section Two, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-three dash three-five-nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to Section Three N. It's the next one in the sequence of resolutions.
I would like you to read the resolution in denying.
Before we do that, I just want to make sure, they will be charged administrative fees. Is that what I understood?
That's a separate resolution.
The board votes that way.
Okay. Make sure of that. Okay. Very well.
Resolution number two-three dash three-six-zero, in the matter of commissioners setting aside the order for and dismissing the petition for Section Three N, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project, due to one or more of the following reasons.
So, move.
Would you like to state?
Second.
All right. Further discussion?
Would you like to do that? The cost is equal or exceeds the benefits of the improvement? It's not necessary or not conducive to public welfare?
The.
Probably all three.
Yeah. Based on the testimony, I'd say not necessary.
Yeah, it's not necessary in the cost.
Right. It's, it's.
Be less than the benefit of the improvements.
Yeah.
Okay. Vote on motion two-three dash three-six-zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-three dash three-six-one, in the matter of ordering that the cost for the proceedings of Section Three N, part of the Laneta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project, including the costs incurred by the Board of Commissioners, the County Engineer, and the Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District in making and the Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District in making surveys, plans, reports, and schedules, be distributed to the landowners in the same ratio as determined in the final assessment, assessments presented at the final hearing.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Vote on motion 23-361. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Okay, that's it for 3S, or 3N?
3N. Now, 3S is up.
3S, I would ask for a denial of 3S.
Resolution number 23-362, in the matter of commissioners setting aside the order for and dismissing the petition for the Section 3S, part of the Lynetta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project, due to, would you like to read all of the...
Aye.
Reasons?
Yes, please.
Cost is equal to or exceeds benefit of the improvement, the improvement is not necessary, or the improvement is not conducive to public welfare.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 23-362. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 23-363, in the matter of ordering that the cost for the proceedings of Section 3S, part of the Lynetta Lane subdivision watershed drainage improvement project, including the costs incurred by the Board of Commissioners, the County Engineer, and the Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District in making surveys, plans, reports, and schedules, be distributed to the landowners in the same ratio as determined in the final estimated assessments presented at the final hearing.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 23-363. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Okay. That, the Lynetta Lane petition project is hereby concluded.
We do have need for executive session.
Yes.
That's right.
Let's go ahead with the...
Resolution number 23-364, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for[1784.12]